Is this loud at all? Yeah?
That's true.
Tess, Tess.
Is yours on, Ross? Your mic's on.
Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Yeah, I turned yours down a little bit. We got a little bit of a lag spot. Yeah, I think you gotta just...
We didn't say that. We didn't say that.
This is why it was hot.
It's not that.
Yes, it is.
This is a hot mic here.
Oh, yeah. So you should do that, yeah.
Yeah, and except I thought I was picking up that to be fair because it was out here last time.
Oh.
These aren't out here. That, and my place that, and I used to pick it up.
Right.
We've got an angle, we can get angle on it.
I will, I have to.
Hi, Nita.
How are you?
How are you doing? That's a question.
I'm doing well, thank you.
Awesome, awesome.
Doing well.
Awesome seeing you here.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We're still waiting for the sheriff to see if he's got some... I wish I'd had, if it wasn't too late, I would have had an honor guard, but... So hopefully he can do it, if not, I'll try and see some more voice calls, like that. But since everybody's up to the state...
I call to order the board of trustee regular meeting for May sixteen, twenty twenty-three, and the time is now six P M. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give an invocation?
If you guys like, if you guys bow your heads to me. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, for the citizens' commitment to township and the freedoms we enjoy. I pray that you view with those who cannot attend here, that you view with those who protect our freedoms, that our first line responders, that give their lives so that we may enjoy our... I pray for those families that miss their loved ones and their God on protecting us. Be with them. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a united one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Here. I move to adopt the meeting in twenty twenty-three meetings to set a limit of not more than one speech of three minutes length on the same question on the same day for each trustee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Evans?
Uh, yes, well, I'm glad you're finally just gonna adopt it as a permanent rule for the year instead of addressing it at every meeting. However, I would say this is still inappropriate. Um, it wouldn't be, uh, for the three-minute rule if materials were properly provided to the full board uh, prior to the meeting for review. Um, typically I get it when I sit down at the podium or hours before, uh, even minutes. So there's no real time to review or do any proper due diligence, which is critical uh, in, um, operating a township or any organization. Uh, and the one, um, the one-time rule, that isn't, um, obeyed by the rest of the board. Um, numerous times, it's only held against one individual, myself, to limit my speech. So again, if we would properly do things and have proper administration and transparency in this township and actually work together as a board, we, we could limit it to three minutes and, uh, handle these items, uh, in an expedited manner. However, that is not being done. Uh, so I would be against this for those reasons, and nothing's changed since we've gotten the administrator. No information's being provided, information's being withheld. So I think we need the opportunity to have proper discussion and a back and forth, not just make statements. It needs to be a conversation because, uh, I do recall, uh, a candidate before saying that they want to bring that to the township. But actions are more, uh, I guess, indicative of, of intentions than words. And we need proper discussion on this board. There's a lot of, uh, important items that have been just shoved through without proper discussion. And again, that's what happened in the past board. And that was admitted to, that they would discuss things outside and not in the meetings. We, we need to have an open discussion in front of the public. If it's, if it's good for the township and the public, we should be able to speak here. Not determine everything behind the scenes and just shove it through without any discussion by the majority of this board. So I would be against that for those reasons.
Trustee Johnson?
None.
Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, I move to, I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, again, this is not a cooperative agenda. Ms. McKee said when we hired the administrator that the administrator would seek the input of all trustees and their priorities. That has not been done. Ms. McKee continues to have a stranglehold on this township, the agenda, and all business of this township. You, you think it's funny, Ms. McKee, but it's not. What, w- we've hired an administrator at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents an hour, and they are supposed to be creating the agenda. Look at any other entity. But the answers that I get is, Ms. McKee does the agenda. Ms. McKee, I have, I have nothing to do with it. I have nothing to do with it. So that's, that's just improper. Why can't we just move forward in a positive direction and work together? Because we have a lot of important items to address. This agenda is so light for what needs to be done in this township. And I, just earlier, I saw the, uh, email saying we've gotta, uh, approve the purchase of a, uh, pressure washer that I tried to get done last year. Why isn't that on the agenda? Maybe the public deserves to know what we're, what business we're gonna be doing. Anything we're gonna motion or re- resolve should be on this agenda. And I've been promised that that was gonna be the case. It's not being done. And even executive session, I, I asked for an executive session. They're gonna be hiring individuals that we're not interviewing. We have before. And to properly discuss it, we need an executive session because it's unprofessional if we discuss personal matters in public, and that's what you're forcing us to do. You've done it on the board appointments, and now you want to do it on the hiring. We need an executive session, like I requested of Ms. McKee and the administrator, to discuss the three individuals that are being put forward to be hired. Because again, things need to be addressed, and I would hope we could be professional in doing an executive session and not be forced in the public. It's not fair to the applicant at all. And that's what you'll be doing. So I move to add, uh, an executive session, uh, before the proposed hiring of the road crew to properly discuss that possible hiring, and then also to have a proper discussion uh, under old business workshop on the solar farms. Wha- where did that go? Now we're having public comments without...
You're having a discussion and doing a motion.
Uh, that's part of my motion to explain that. So, okay, well, my motion is to add the executive session prior to the hiring of the road crew, so we can be professional, and to add discussion on having a future workshop to handle the solar farm properly. And to add a point on the road crew, or road department purchases, as it should be on the agenda.
Sounds like it died for lack of second. Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes. I move to adopt the minutes from April fourth, April sixth, April eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, meetings as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, again, uh, the April eighteenth minutes were just, uh, transmitted at noon today. There's not been proper time to review those for accuracy. And I, I still don't understand why we can't do these things transparently and in cooperation. It appears that the board just doesn't care if these minutes are correct or not. Um, and again, they lack the motions made, which is an attempt by the majority of this board to hide actions which are proposed and needed in this township. Uh, Robert's rules says it should be in there. They wanna take it out. You watch my videos of the meetings, and it's totally different. We're talking about the, the, uh, um, water, uh, pressure purchase this year. I did that back in February, back in August, back in, you wanna know that. Because they wanna strip it out of the minutes. That is not being transparent. Um, and again, what, why were we three months behind? I've been asking. Why were we and what were we doing to ensure that doesn't happen again? I'm glad that we're catching up, but why were we three months behind? We have a duty per Ohio Revised Code to be timely, and that's typically the next meeting. So I hope we can be timely, but these minutes need to get to us for review in timely manner. Do we not care that they're reviewed or not by the board that's gonna be voting on them? I haven't had time. So I move to table these minutes until we can properly review it and that the other ones be provided in a timely manner for proper review.
Died for a lack of a second. Roll call, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Yes.
I just wanted that you know that the same thing we've been doing for the day in that last set that was done, I got them that day.
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
The same thing we've been doing that last.
Okay, so you got that little record.
But we're voting on them, and we didn't have a chance to review it.
No. I would like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Nita Hanson for her report, please, for the administrator. Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Evening, everyone. I wanted to talk first about a couple, um, sort of community events. Just a reminder that, um, the Bragg family dedication ceremony of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial um, will be held on Monday, May the ninth. The ceremony itself will begin at eleven, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the twenty-ninth. Memorial Day, Monday, Memorial Day, at February High Point Park. Um, the Licking County four H B M will begin playing about ten-thirty, but the ceremony itself will start at eleven, so spread the word. Um, also, this is Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. And as part of the acknowledgement of all that our defenders do, there will be a cruiser caravan. The date of the caravan is tomorrow evening, May seventeen. The caravan will head east on forty from Tolgate, crossing three-ten between seven P M and seven-twenty P M. Then later, between nine-thirty and ten, the caravan will come down three-ten from one-sixty-one into Metasola and across three-ten toward I seventy. So if you can make it out to the area to cheer on the caravan, I wanted to let you know that it was happening. Um, uh, as relates to the Southwest Licking Community Water and Sewer District, overall, the district has infrastructure challenges related to capacity and conveyance. The new waste treatment plan on Wagerum is scheduled to be functioning by fall of twenty twenty-five or spring of twenty twenty-six. And this will primarily address the consumption that will increase once High Point is developed. I attended the, um, district board meeting on May eleventh. It was reported that all projects are moving unscheduled. The Summit Road Force Main Extension is estimated for completion in June. The Refugee Road Pump Station is projected, projected for completion in December. They've drilled four new wells. And the Refugee Road Lift Station is proceeding. The wet well has been set at that site. And survey work is being done related to the A Road. There was discussion in the board meeting about a Newark Advocate article about recent land purchases in Granville and St. Albans Township. Intel announcements renewed interest in closing on the agreements to purchase that property. As relates to the JED and JED-Z boards, they'll meet later this month. At the JED-Z board meeting, we'll present the radar speed signs that have already been approved by the board for reimbursement. And I will report in June more information about these board meetings. Skanel has reported to the county that regrading and seed across the site in addition to addressing the erosion and rip rap at the curb cuts in the southern parking lots is expected to be complete by May nineteenth. The drawings for the tie-in to Campbell Ditch are being routed for signatures, and work is anticipated to begin by May thirty-first. The installation of the ditch section for the sound wall will be completed thereafter. The Licking County Transportation Improvement District met on May tenth. I was at that meeting. There is a meeting with ODOT related to the Pike Street improvements scheduled for May seventeenth. The Marcy Grant for that work is in place. The T I D will be accepting bids for the Refugee Road Widening Project. All but two redways have been purchased and the remaining two are nearing finalization. The JED-Z board is scheduled to meet on May twenty-sixth. The next trustee board meeting is June sixth. In order to seek reimbursement from the JED-Z, the board must first approve an expenditure. The request to the JED-Z for reimbursement must be made prior to the expenditure of any funds. For this reason, I ask that the board approve the expenditure of not more than twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of a hot water pressure washer, the attendant electrical services, and the installation of the necessary ventilation in the gar- garage bay, and to permit Mrs. McKee to sign any necessary contracts or invoices and submit the proposed expenditure of funds for reimbursement to the JED-Z.
I so moved to that we will spend no more than twenty thousand dollars towards the, um, spray wash for the road crew, um, garage. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, the one presented here, it's a gas, man, natural gas fired for the heat, and it's electric pump, correct?
Mr.?
That's correct.
Colby?
Yes.
And it's the same on all these quotes here.
Correct.
If it's what you have, yeah, I think it's gonna help us preserve the trucks at least a couple more years and keep the saw off, I mean, that... Keep our guys safe in here so they're not breathing in fumes.
Yeah. Mr. Evans, discussion?
Yeah, I'm glad to see we're finally moving, uh, forward with this, uh, after over a year. Again, I brought forward this last February and then last August in conjunction with Mr. Carlisle. And Ms. McKee blocked this at the JED-Z board. Um, our guys have been using a residential pressure washer. And fumes within the bay, and this was a safety issue. This was a maintenance issue on our very expensive trucks. And why do we continue to have delay after delay after delay? This is one of the reasons that we, we've been having trouble keeping people employed, and they're leaving because they're not supported. And this is just one of the many things that has been needed for a long time. And, uh, again, why this wasn't on the agenda? You knew it was gonna be on there. I've been told, Mrs. Hanson, that you were gonna place things on the agenda and weren't gonna do this. Um, it, it needs to be on there, and then I see the quotes, two of the quotes are from last year, so I don't even think that they are valid, and likely they're gonna be higher. Um, have, have the other contractors, the, been, uh, sought out for what their prices would be?
So Mr. Hopely is gonna get updated, um, bids on the electric and on the ventilation, and the amount that I suggested should be, uh, approved by the board allows for an increase should those bids be higher.
So that's why you said... That's why you said no more than twenty thousand?
That's correct.
Ms. McKee, this is my time, but, well, last year, when we, uh, the, the second time, again, one was blocked by Ms. McKee. The cost was twenty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And this was approved, you know, presented to the JED-Z board and the trustees. But there are other items, too. More max saw. We need to deal with tree branches that are overhanging the roads that are destroying mirrors at a thousand dollars a pop, an excavator.
Is that, that doesn't have anything to do with the pressure washer, right? The branches hanging over...
These are all things with reimbursement through the JEDs.
Right, but not with the pressure washer.
Ms. Hanson, this is my time, please.
I'm just asking a question, Mr. Evans. I just wanna make sure we're staying on topic, that's all.
Thank you.
The, the topic is the reimbursement through the JEDs. And like I said, those are the items that the road crew needs, so it's not just this pressure washer. Um, that needs to be addressed.
That's not, Mr. Evans, that's not the topic, that's not... Yeah, we're talking about a power washer.
Uh, you just don't wanna talk about anything, do you?
So, Mr. Evans, I would just point out that the, the bid for the power washer itself is ten thousand, one hundred and eight dollars?
Right, and the two, the two bids for the work, uh, to, for the power, for the gas and all that are a year old. Are you gonna have time to get a proper bid to pre- present to the JED-Z board? I would've thought that would've been...
Yes, sir, that's our, that's our intention, is that we would be able to have the updated, um, bids before the JED-Z board meets. And that's why I wanted to get the permission tonight and made a more, just blanket instead of going to the exact dollar, not, and not to exceed the amount. So we can get those updated bids and include those together.
And the quote for the pressure washer is, was only valid for thirty days, and that was two months ago. Are they gonna honor that price, or is that...
We've already, we've already verified that, that price has been honored.
Well, like I said, finally stepped in the right direction, but we, we shouldn't have any delays like this. This should've been done last year. We have numerous things rustling out on the truck, and our guys' time is more valuable than sitting there with a residential pressure washer.
So it's really helpful for me coming in and, and being able to, um, address things. I can't, I can't go back to the back, but all I can do is move forward. And as I, in the short time that I've been here, the attempt to work together, to be, to do the things that the community needs, to support our, our road crew, the JED-Z board is gonna meet, which is why I explained that, uh, this is all coming together as I'm working through things and planning. And so that, I can't make, I can't fix the past. I can just move forward, and that's...
Right, I, I understand, Ms. McKee, Mr. Johnson was responsible for the past, but they're still controlling things.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Varian, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Mrs. Hanson, would you have any additional comments on the report?
Except contact me if you need anything. I'm here to serve the community. You can reach me by phone, you can reach me by email, just please feel free to reach out.
Ms. Hanson, I, I do have a question. Do you have an update on the ponds? And then also on the, um, West Licking Development Group? I've seen legal bills when nothing was forwarded to our attorney on that matter.
Mr. Evans, you're getting, we want you to state on form one, please.
And this is the proper time to ask for information. So please, is there an update on the ponds and the West Licking Development Group?
First of, I just wanna correct your vernacular because it's not a pond, and we've learned that it's a wetland. And we have a meeting with U S Fish and Wildlife coming up, and so I assume that I, based on that meeting, I expect that I will have something included in my joint report. And I don't know what we need to do here other...
West Licking Development Group.
Yeah, I don't have any update on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hanson, for your report, greatly appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and move over to the public comments. Please limit your, um, comments to three minutes per person. You come up to the podium here, state your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Liz Ashen, right, I'm a little bit common with trail. I just wanna say that the reason that nobody can get along with Mark, and Mark feels like nobody can get along with him, is because he hasn't paved the road for that, okay? All I hear is a broken record every time I come here. I hear broken records from Mark Evans every time I come here. It's annoying and it's ridiculous, okay? He's a broken record. We've heard this many times, and then you go out and say it over and over and over. I mean, how many times you need to talk like this? It's getting irritating, okay? It's getting very irritating, Mark, okay? You are a broken record. Nita, you're doing an awesome job. I think she's doing a great job for just being here, and like she said, she's trying to move forward, okay? I see all the trashing and bashing that you do online, and you make yourself look like a complete moron and a complete fool, okay? a complete moron and a complete fool, okay? Because no professional would do that, okay? If I did that with my job as a professional, okay, working for a community college, they would fire me on the spot. I would not be permitted to do that, much less have spied 462 times, okay? You wonder why she covered the cameras? She covered the cameras because she got tired of being spied on her and Bill Dance, okay? Besides that, where's the camera that was at the, where's the camera that was at the garage? Where's that? Where's that in front of the counter for that? Mark, I want you to see one thing that you've accomplished for this township or for the community. One thing, just one, just one, just one. You are barraging them every single week, every single week. It's a broken record, but I wanna know just one thing you've accomplished for the township, okay? You make yourself look like a fool and a moron when you go out there on Facebook, okay? You look stupid, okay? You're losing your fan club. I didn't know about this fan club over here, but you know what? You look like a moron. You look like a moron and you are really, really, really a disaster for this township, trust me. Trust and believe. These guys are a true success. Very, very humble people, okay? Trying to get the job in and all you do is barrage them. Discussion, 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 broken record, new, 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 broken record. You can tell I'm very irritated and I should be and I am. I am a taxpayer here and I've been here for 24 years, 24. I was the sixth house when Cumberland Trail was built, okay? Been here a long time, buddy, longer than you're ever gonna even dream about, okay? And I'm tired of your antics. I'm tired of your half truths and your lies. Do you get it? Strengthen your professional demeanor.
Thank you, Ms. Liz.
It's just the truth, I'm sorry.
Trista Olkeshaw, 414 Trail West. I would first like to offer congratulations to all of our graduates who walk into Memorial this year as Class 23. As a graduate of the class of 1976, which is bicentennial year, I think you can guess where I get my radical views on funding everything done properly. I am glad we got, finally got an update on what's going on with Scannell. I do agree with Mark that there should've been an executive session before hiring our present administrator plus for hiring the road crew. Those should be done, you know, discussions like that in private and then the results run forward. I was kind of upset that there was no discussion about the four people that were interviewed for the administrative position before one was chosen. I agree with Mark, the pressure washer should've been on the agenda, but the thing is, the road crew has been needing a lot of things for many years and all of those items that they need, need to be brought before the board and addressed, not one little piece item at a time, because by understanding, they need a new truck. They need other things that need to be done to help them be successful. And as far as success with Mark, well, Mark was with the administrator at a meeting to discuss the flooding of the road up Palmer, even though the road crew and the road is Jeff's department, where was Jeff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Capmire, 29 Roman Court. I must say that I'm a bit disappointed and confused by the agenda item listed under Old Business that says solar farms, public comments. What does that mean exactly? Mr. Evans requested a special work session. Is this a work session? Doesn't resemble any of the previous ones held here, but then again, way back in 2022, it was agreed that the trustees would conduct one public work session each month. It seems to me that there might've been one or two and then that idea just disappeared into the atmosphere. Solar farms, public comments, doesn't resemble a special meeting either because that is a one-topic meeting. And just to clarify that in my stance about large solar farms in Etna Township, having been a resident of this township for nearly 50 years, I care about what happens here. I care about the landscape of the area. I care about the quality of life for the people who live here. I care about the families who want to raise their children in an environment that shields them from the hectic pace of city living and I care about the farmers who are seeing their family livelihoods going the way of the dinosaur. They are men of earth, of the earth and I'm sorry, we didn't do more locally to help preserve this important industry. As a result, we will all suffer the consequences of these actions and non-actions. And looking over my citizen comments from last August and September, I'm disheartened that we've not been able to have a real discussion about exclusionary zones, solar farms and battery energy storage systems. Last summer, Ms. McKee assured me at a public meeting that she would support the exclusionary zone effort and then with Mr. Johnson representing the land use committee and championing what's best for this Etna Township and its citizens, along with Mr. Evans' support, I naively thought at 3-0 vote, perhaps Etna Township would be a leader and not a laughing stock in Licking County. I'd also contacted a group from Hartford Township to talk about their situation, but with nothing firm from the president, all of these efforts fell by the wayside. And I still suggest that a special meeting be arranged to discuss this very important issue that will certainly impact every resident here in Etna Township.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
I have a few questions. Main Street has been shut down for almost two months now, from Imperial to Refuge. When are they gonna open up? It's done. The road is done. They've had cars, they've had emergency equipment coming out. What are they gonna open up for the rest of us? And now, the, from Imperial, we can't get out on Main Street from Imperial, they're digging whatever they're digging. I've been a resident here since 1978 and there was nothing here. And I think this Etna Township is being, is a laughing stock. Nobody can get along. Two or three times, two out of three or four times, there's something in the tasking standard about Etna Township. Just read it. And there's also a, I don't know whether it's a project or I can't remember what it is, down on Main Street and it sits back off of Main Street, behind the houses. And there's outbuildings, there's a eye there, there's a house there. What is it? Nobody seems to know. I've asked Mark, he doesn't know. I asked John Carlisle, he doesn't know. He did say the sheriff had been there and it was suspicious activity, but nobody knows what's going on there. So I was just, I'm just curious what it is that they're doing. There's a lot of things that, illegal things that could be really bad here and nobody seems to care. So I think what needs to be done is this Etna Township needs to work together. And, yeah, well, it kinda reminds me of my very early days. It really does. If Marty and Andy were here, it would be perfect. Thank you.
Hello, Adam Kelly, 899 Smoke Road. I just wanted to add a couple of things I wanted to ask about. The pond, ponds can be weapons, so people are on it because weapons includes ponds and no one does the smokes. But anyways, next one I'll, it was like a pond. The last vote that I'm aware of was the vote to fill it in and I know that there's been a lot of more information gathered since then, so I'm wondering if maybe we should back off on that idea since that's the only thing that's on the record right now is the vote to fill it in. So I don't know what the deal is, what you have to do to get someone on there to maybe change your mind on that, but that's, that's the last thing that was voted on, which is to fill it in, I think that's a good idea. The other thing I wanna talk about was the park this was, on that property, well, the last meeting, we discussed getting a planner to come in and plan out the park, but I don't think the property's been secured yet. So I'm wondering what the holdup is on that, what's going on with, why isn't it secured? And also, when are we gonna start getting some community involvement in that, whether there's gonna be a parking, parking recognition or just a worker or something to go talk about that rather than go directly to a developer?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Any additional public comments tonight?
Erie Burkle, 254 Trail East. Transparency is the hallmark of both the government and we don't have transparency here in Etna Township. Ever since I asked for draft minutes, all of a sudden, we're getting caught up on minutes, but the new thing now is that the agendas are being scrubbed, when those minutes are gonna be approved so that no one has the opportunity to request those draft minutes ahead of time. And the minutes are being scrubbed. Votions are not being placed on there regarding attempts by both residents and elected officials who put pressing items on the agenda. And that's meaned unintentionally by you, Mr. Johnson, and you, Mrs. McKee, because you don't want the public to know of the items that we're trying to bring forward to be addressed by this board. That is a total lack of transparency. I've been here quite a few decades myself and as a former trustee, I wanna speak to the reimbursement. I've been supporting the reimbursement for the road crew equipment and so has Mr. Evans. He and I were both at the JZ meeting last year and Mr. Carlisle killed that from being addressed by the board. I went to a subsequent JZ board and requested at that meeting regarding the reimbursement and the process that trusting McKee place that on the next regularly scheduled meeting. And that was blocked as well because you wouldn't amend the agenda. And you're part of that, Mr. Johnson, because you will never second an amendment to the agenda. That's not doing the township's business. When it comes to Scannell, we have the update from, and it's been almost a year in August. August 1st was their violation on Scannell regarding the county subdivision regulation, but I, and Mrs. Hanson, you're right, you weren't here, so this is not directed at you. But we still haven't heard anything about the zoning violations. We haven't had any detail on the wall, on the lighting, on the stormwater problems and you've been absent. You've done nothing, Mr. Johnson. You haven't gone out there, you haven't walked the property. I've walked the property as a private citizen. I've been an advocate. I was at Licking County today asking about it. Where are we on the issues regarding zoning and the lining and the wall and the walls too close and the stormwater that's coming onto their property? That's the update that we deserve. And when it comes to the master park plan, I've got the proposal here, but my concern is $49,800, but the exclusions are the wetlands delineation, surveying and mapping. That's all the time and expense. We don't even have a fee scheduled with this proposal. So I think we've got the cart before the horse. You wanna delineate the wetlands and everything out there before you start planning, otherwise you'll have to go back and say, well, I guess we can't, we can't put that shelter there and we can't do this and we can't do that. Flood plane modeling and permitting's not on there.
Mr. Burkhart, time, thank you.
Did you read the proposal, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Any additional public comments tonight?
John Canard, 10785 Palmer Road. I just wanna make an announcement. There's about 80 acres for sale right beside me on Palmer Road. If any of you folks would like to keep Etna Township country, put your money where your mouth is and buy some land, become a farmer. You wanna buy some, good job. I'd like to get my neighbor. But, you know, everybody wants to talk about solar farms and apartments and warehouses and housing developments. We don't. The problem is, the farmers have been pushed out of Etna Township. We used to run it, now we don't. Housing development says room, Etna Township. I hate to say it, but if you guys live in the housing development, that's the problem with Etna Township. Do you guys know what happens to a farmer when he decides he doesn't wanna farm anymore? He either sells his land. He don't wanna sell his land because he's been a farmer. He wants to keep his property the way it is. You have to plant crops. If you don't plant crops, you don't get CAUV, which is a tax break for farmers, a big tax break. If they don't do that, they gotta pay three years in the, in the past to bring them back up to the tax base. So we don't want farmers to, we don't want, we don't want you to sell your farm. Why? I can't farm anymore. You know what happens to a farmer? He has to lease his land. I got a proposal right now in the mail for a solar farm. This is what happens when you get a solar farm on a farmer's property. Reliable, long-term income. Lease your land 20 to 45 years. You get three times what you get for leasing and you don't have to do nothing. You don't have to worry about the weather. Leave your land in good hands. Alternative, we'll purchase your land and cooperate the rate. If it's just a good fit, we'll build dual use systems. Serve your community by hosting a solar farm, you're providing a source of low-cost clean energy to your community and surrounding area. Does that sound bad? Sounds pretty good to me. Farmer makes out? You do, you guys did too. How much can landowners earn by hosting a community solar project? Lease payments are at a significant premium to the current rental agreement. How are lease payments made? Payments are made quarterly, in advance, or fixed annually, life of the project, 20 years or more. That's retirement for a farmer, instant income. What happens at the, at the, at the end of the lease? Legislation responds that removing all equipment and infrastructure associated with the project...
Mr. Canard, thank you.
No problem. I knew it would take one or three minutes to educate him, but...
Thank you. Any additional public comments tonight, anyone?
Good evening, my name is Sabrina Warner. I live in Licking County, not Etna Township, so I hope it's okay that I can speak tonight. I am an elected official. I came tonight just to see how things are going. I know I'm supposed to address the board, but I do wanna address the board in the crowd if it's okay that you are not the laughing stock of Licking County. Each county has their own issues that they're dealing with right now. Each township has their own issues that they're dealing with right now. I would say things are very heated because for a very long time, we've had government that's been trying to divide us. I understand the heated arguments. I have them every single day with politicians, day in and day out. I do not agree with every single one of you on things that are happening, but what I know right now is as citizens sitting in the audience, if you don't agree with what's happening, you have a choice to vote. When it's time to vote, that's when you should use your voice. Getting involved in these meetings is important, to come and let them know what you're feeling, what your emotions are, but progress happens and most of the time, right now, the newbies are doing the best they can and pointing fingers at the newbies is completely unfair and unjust. And I would also say that I would ask that you not grow weary in doing good, Mr. Johnson and Mrs. McKee. Thank you.
Thank you. What, what township do you want to name?
Oh, Granville. If you don't know, Granville might be the laughing stock of Licking County.
Thank you. Sir, any additional public comments tonight? Okay, thank you. Move on over to the farm rental agreement. I've moved to enter into a land rent contract with the crop year 2023 with Keller Enterprise One LLC for $125 per, per tillable acre for a total of 61.64 acres and to authorize myself, Rosal McDy, to sign the contract. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Evans?
Yes, uh, where to start? First of all, this contract, though it was prepared back in April, we're just seeing it now, and does not delineate time for payment. Our prosecutor indicated that that's an issue, and he was gonna review other things. Why Ms. McKee had our special outside counsel that we have to pay for draw up this contract is kinda confusing when the prosecutor is our attorney for free. So there's unnecessary expenditure in this, and it's not even done properly. I've got a contract here that the Southwest Lincoln Community Water and Sewer Districts put out for their land. And it's a six-page contract which actually addresses all the issues, unlike the one-page contract here that doesn't address the issues and that our own prosecutor said has issues. Additionally, the amount is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, the Southwest Lincoln lease is a hundred and eighty dollars. Another farmer I talked to said the going rate's a hundred and seventy dollars. Why is this so low? And I think the more important question is, what happened to last year's lease? I have minutes here back in February first. Trustee McKee is working on context and farmer required most of the park property. The trustees discussed putting out this bid. March first, two thousand twenty-two, trustee McKee has an initial farmer that may be interested in bidding to farm the park property. The park property was farmed, there's no lease. Where's the money? Ms. McKee, what happened to that? Did, did you do a lease without authorization of the board? Or did you not do a lease and somebody kept the money? I think that's a serious question here. Because we had, here, here's the escrow agreement for that property. That is as of the thirtieth day of December, two thousand twenty-one. That was ours. It wasn't escrow, but it was ours. So that's why in February, March last year, Ms. McKee was supposed to put that out to bid and get a lease. Again, it was farmed. It was farmed. We just, you just submitted the CAUV that showed that it was farmed sixty-seven acres soybean. Now the Garren property sat idle, so we missed out on that. So who got the money? Was there a lease? And why was there a lease if it was farmed? Do you care to answer that question, Mr. Johnson, Ms. McKee?
Mr. Evans, again, you just got you, and your, your lives have to stop. We're gonna move on.
I've got the documentation right here.
You got, you got your.
Yeah, I was gonna address, like, some of the issues. I don't know what the term of the lease is that you were talking about for the water district. This is just a one term, a one-year lease.
And I just hope they're sort of.
That, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And so that makes it less attractive to many of the farmers who want the lease of three-year lease. And so that, but then I know that the rate that it's been given here is a rate that's greater than this farmer is farming some of the other land that is connected to this land. And this, this farmer, Mr. Keller, has all of the access that he needs. And so the township is not gonna have to, like, build an access road or do anything else. And so I, I just wanted to address some of your questions about some of the terms of the lease.
Well, this, this lease is a one-year lease and can be revoked at any time for the water district. It, and like I said, doing the proper due diligence, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty an acre. Is the going rate, that's, why didn't we put it out to bid that Ms. McKee said she was gonna look at last year?
Give three minutes, right, Mr. Evans?
Right, we don't wanna discuss any important matters.
Roll call, Mrs. Vronn?
Mr. Evans?
Not even address the prosecution now.
Roll call, Mrs. Vronn?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, we'll go, go ahead and move over to the solar farm. I would like to open the floor up for public discussions regarding solar farms. Please limit your, your discussion to three minutes. Sure, anybody wants to talk? Please come to the podium and state your first, last thing in your address for the record, sir, please.
My name is Tom Haddox, four six Imperial. I am confused very much about all this. There's no system I see here that people are trying to work together. I'm gonna attack anybody. This is the first meeting I ever attended. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have been here before.
You're fine. Is this regarding solar farms?
Yes, it is. It, it, we, where we live right now is, in my terms, it's warehouse central. I used to have what I considered a very rural pastoral place to live, love it. I am, I've put up with mud and roads, noise at all hours of the day, streets being chopped up and shut down. And I'm not really sure that I wanna do anything that cuts down green grass, farmland. Places where you can take your children or grandchildren out the woods and just go for a walk. And I don't think walking around trucks, prime trucks, or in the late afternoon, when the chickens come home to roost, all the trucks. I just see, don't see any sense in this. I don't see this as a growth. In fact, the best thing I can say is, hell, I'm glad I'm seventy-eight, and I'll probably be dead in ten years. And I just think this is a bad, bad, very bad idea. We moved out here, when I first moved out before I married my wife, I, I used to dream that when I hit two-seventy, I was in the country, and I loved it. Honey shit, you know better than that now. Sorry, thank you very much, Tom, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Judy Caphmeyer, twenty-nine Roma Court. I too am confused because when I saw that on the, um, the agenda, solar farms, citizen comments. That's really not a discussion. That's citizen comments. I've been making citizen comments for a year and a half. And, you know, with all due respect to Mr. Canard, you know, I believe in private property rights. And yes, you're getting, you could get a sizable amount for your farm. And if you want to sell that for solar panels and, you know, you're free to do that. But we were looking at the total picture of Etna Township. I didn't want it to look in the future. You know, and like I said, I'm sorry that we didn't do more to help farmers. Perhaps to offer, you know, loans or grants or even scholarships for young people, for your children or your grandchildren to go to college and, um, and major in agriculture. You know, I'm sorry we didn't do that. These discussions should have happened thirty years ago. I'm sorry that didn't happen. But now we're talking about solar farms. You've seen these solar farms? They're ugly. They're as ugly as all of our cement boxes that, you know, penetrate our landscape here. And I don't want that. I don't, my children no longer live in Etna Township. So I don't have to particularly worry about my children and my grandchildren, you know, because they've chosen to live elsewhere. I suppose your children have chosen to live elsewhere. Lots of people are choosing to live elsewhere. And if we bring in solar farms, it's even gonna exacerbate that situation. So I'm not sure that this is a special meeting. A special meeting is something where people are advised that this is gonna be the topic. Come prepare. I come prepared for my three minutes. And so, but I'm not prepared to come and just, you know, drone on and on because, like I said, we've been saying this for a year and a half. All I've asked for is a discussion of that. I want the trustees to be as intelligent and as informed on this topic as I am. Thank you.
Hey, uh, my name's Jake Warner. I'm from Granville Township. And I just wanna say, I'm not sure if you trustees want solar farming or you don't. Number one issue I have with it is it's not farming. It should be under energy. It should not be titled or zoned under farming. I think if you want, if you get it titled under energy, that would probably put a stop to all this. If you wanna put it off, I think you pass an ordinance that says, you know, solar energy harvesting of the sun is energy, is not farming. I think that's your first bet. I think it's bad for the environment. No matter how much you produce, you're literally bulldozing hundreds and hundreds of acres, lots of pesticides, lots, lots of gravel. They are ugly. If you really want solar, why don't you put them on top of, say, like, the Amazon buildings or over the parking lots, the Amazon? They have hundreds and hundreds of acres. I don't know about hundreds, but they have lots of acreage, but parking lots, the solar fields could go over that stuff if you really, if it's about really producing energy. I'm not sure what it is, if it, and it, and I am for property rights. I understand the farmer has the right to sign a lease. I just feel like the issue is, these big solar companies from all over are coming in saying it's farming, it's not. I mean, farming, if you Google the, if you look up the definition of farming, there's nowhere in there that doesn't talk about harvesting the sun, so.
Thank you.
Gary Burkle, we're two five four Trail East. Yeah, I want the record to reflect that it has been over a year that we've tried to bring this subject to the Board of Trustees. And for those that might be here for the first time tonight, that we do have a resolution in front of the Board, Etna Township Board of Trustees, which has to be passed first to request that the county commissioners create an exclusionary zone for solar and wind. And I appreciate that correction, not really farming, it should be under energy. That that is the process that has to be followed. I've been to the county commissioner meetings. I've been there when groups have talked about what's going up in Hartford. I'm a previous village administrator in Hartford, over a thousand acres of farming ground. And I think that issue is still pending. But I'd like to see the trustees move forward on this. And we should have a detailed work session with presentations so that we can get all the facts out, let all the residents, regardless of whether, whichever side you're on, come in and address this issue. But time is of the essence. We need to be proactive, not reactive. The other issue then has to do with our own zoning. Anything under fifty megawatts, we can go ahead and regulate here at the township level. So once again, I'm asking that the board have a special meeting, a work session, one to three hours, have it well advertised. And secondly, that we begin looking not only at an exclusionary zone, but also at our own zoning code, which is sorely out of date. We need to update that. And there could be a discussion regarding putting solar on some of the mini warehouses we have here or some of the open ground. I will tell you, when I was on the Southwest Lincoln Water and Sewer Board, we were approached about solar, and that was between two thousand eleven and two thousand and fourteen. And the district decided that it was, wasn't really worth the expense and possible ramifications of having solar panels on the Southwest Lincoln property out there to get rid of. So again, I ask that this board be proactive and take action and set up a proper meeting so that we can fully discuss this and have a full discussion on the legislation, the proposed legislation that you already have in your hands. Thank you.
Are we gonna have trustee comments on this? Ms. McKee, are we, are we gonna have trustee comments? Or do I have to speak as public comment?
John Canard, one oh seven eight five Palmer Road. I knew when I read the minutes what it meant when it said, uh, solar farms are public comments, so. But I'm not for solar panels, and I'm not against solar panels. I'm against people saying what the farmers can do with their land. Just, I wanna make that. I'm not looking to put solar on my farm. I don't know why everybody thinks solar is so ugly. They don't look nothing like the Lowe's truck stop or the warehouses around. This is a picture of a solar farm. It's surrounded by trees. No houses, no stores, no roads. Only way you can see that solar panel is from an airplane or from my hot air balloon. If you wanna look at one, I'll take you up. They could put a solar farm on our farm. We're right behind Cole's Warehouse and tree line in front of them. You wouldn't even know there's a solar panel there. That's what I'm saying, I mean, all the hoopla about they're ugly. They are if you put them out beside the road. But, I mean, you buy them before you realize it. You can't see them coming up on them on the interstate. I've seen someone on the interstate. Like I say, you're passing, what was that? That's a solar panel. Says, does solar panels, uh, produce any loud noise? No, the solar facility inverters would produce a very low decimal sound while operating during the day. Not too many people sleep during the day. That does not pose a noticeable disturbance. So that's what my comments is about. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
And another couple minutes.
Again, point, point of order, Ms. McKee, we're gonna have trustee comments on this?
Oh, wait a minute, I got one more.
Okay, sure.
I'm gonna have another second to do. If you can find somebody that rents your land or leases your land and it's considered swat land, uh, for more than a hundred dollars an acre of gravel.
Oh. Mr. Evans? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Conny?
Okay, I'm Connie Heim. I live at ten two nine three Smoke Road. And I have, and we have been approached by a solar panel company. I'm totally against it. My neighbors are already mad because of this even mentioned. I, I don't think our township cares about what people, all of them, think they're only thinking of money or greed or fame. I don't know what it is. But I will, we will not sell to a solar farm. I live right by Seven. The property next to me, McFadden's, is contingent to a solar farm. And they, this guy told me that every one of these warehouses out here are solar tech. So they've already planned what they're gonna do in this area. And it kills birds, and they are noisy. If you break down, and he's also talking to big wind jennies, they're loud. Once they break down, all you do is try out seventy, there's all these broken panels. They don't fix them, they don't fix those wind jennies. And all these birds are getting killed. I'm definitely against that. And I, I know the township will not be happy with a bunch of solar fields around. So please consider that. Work for the people. We put you guys in office, and we thought you was gonna work for us. Everywhere I look, there's a warehouse across from me, and we have a lot of land. We're gonna call it a landlot someday, but I will not put my neighbors. I'm thinking my neighbors, and already said, well, they're mad at us. And there's a rumor, we are not selling. They just want, and what they're offering is dirt cheap for what they're gonna get from this. So that's not a good thing at all. So I, I just hope you guys consider that. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Conny.
I'm Charlotte Marie Epauch at one Suckmore Royalty Drive. And I think it would be great if we did have more discussion. I think there's so many things that need to be looked at and so much to learn. I know Judy's touched on several things, you know, there. And one thing I didn't hear tonight was how to dispose of the building materials once their lives are up. They last, they typically last anywhere from ten to the good ones who last you thirty years. But they're very expensive to dispose of. They're biotoxic hazard, and they're bulky, they take up a lot of disposable space. And a lot of times, it's even, when I read, there's a good report, Carver put out one about it. A lot of times the companies, they can't even afford to. A lot of times the companies, they can't even afford to dispose them properly, they just kind of chuck them off and dump them in the landfill. So that's one thing that we could probably stand to learn more about that. And Connie talked about the birds, and I read another report where, you know, the birds get, actually they're solar fried and their feathers and their wings melt and they're just right there, that's an extreme example, but I'm, I'm all for, you know, finding out more and moving in more. I'm all for farmers doing what they, you know, freedom to do with your land. I just love more information myself and would love to be a part of that if we do that.
Thank you, Shawna. Is there any additional?
One more thing I need to say, he said that if you get a hundred dollar a meter, every farm in this area is getting more than a hundred fifty a meter, so.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comments regarding solar?
Yes, I too was very confused when I saw an email go out, email blasted township saying that you might have the opportunity to talk about solar. I asked our administrator, you know, why do you, well, felt like it was going to do it, but then our secretary said, no, Mr. McKee put that out. But my question is, this has been stagnant for over a year. One meeting, I was directed to take care of it, by the next meeting I had that proposal to go forward, we, we said we were going to have a work session. The following meeting, we're here, I was not contacted by a work session, but anything, and that's where they're not working together. Why, why wouldn't you work with me if that's who's bringing this forward, working with Ms. Kathmeyer who's been a champion of this? And why didn't we schedule the work session? We're, you're calling for public comments when we haven't proposed anything. Why don't we give the public some information and then get their comments in a work session? That would be the logical thing to do, right now you're just asking them to just say whatever based on what they might have heard, what, I mean, Ms. Kathmeyer is very knowledgeable on that, but I'm not sure who else is. And that's where we should bring people in, have a discussion, and sit down, decide where, how we're moving forward. I just don't understand what today's public comments are for and why, again, I'm being blocked in trying to bring forward something this board said, bring this forward. It seems like as soon as I, I mean, within two weeks I had it, said, here's the resolution needed, let's have a discussion, and then it's taken, taken away, and no, no communication with me whatsoever. Why? It's a disservice to our residents. People are passionate about it and this is our future. We might not be here for a while, or, and one resident said, he might not be here in ten years. Well, it's like planting an oak tree, you don't plant it for yourself, you plant it for others. And many people are concerned about others, I am. So please, let's do what's right for the township and its future and address these things properly. Same thing with the pond and all the other matters. It requires discussion, requires information, due diligence. So can we please set a work session, either special meeting, not during the day so people can't attend, at six o'clock, or for a set time during a regular meeting, pre-planned, not let us know two days before, so we can bring people in, experts, activists, those that are around solar farms. Has anybody else on this board reached out to other areas that have solar farms? Have you gone there? Have you, that's part of the due diligence we need, not just public comments.
That'd be great for you, Mr. Evans, since you are taking on that project, so you, that would be great.
Well, if I'm taking over this project, why was this scheduled and I wasn't even told and I'm being told that I have nothing to do with it? That is, Mr. McKee.
Mr. Evans, that's not true, okay?
It is, so can we then set the work session right now for a specific date and time as I've been asking for, so we can properly plan this?
Again, Mr. Evans, we actually gave this feedback in the office, in the minutes shows it. So, but you keep wanting to go back on the past, we can't, we're not even going to go there, we just let that go. But from this point, from, we'll move forward, and I would ask if you, at our next meeting, we'll have a work session. That's easy, we can set that up for our next meeting, have a work session, it's not a problem, but you'll lead it.
Okay, well, that's what I asked the last time, and you wouldn't agree to it. So I would like a work session for a, to start at a specific time, let's say.
It'd be just like our normal meeting, so nobody gets off track.
Well, that's not a work session.
No, you can still have it at, at your normal meeting day, you just still have a work session, we did work sessions all last year.
No, we, we had two work sessions.
You can go from a meeting into a work session, and that's what we can continue with that same Tuesday.
Every work session we had before was reading, this is where something's at and there was that.
Well, let's, let's.
We need a proper discussion, so if you're going to agree that that's going to be on the agenda, I still think the administrator should be creating the agenda. But, so, after the adoption of the agenda and the minutes, we'll have that work session the first thing, correct?
We'll have the work session end with a regular meeting, which is, our next meeting is June sixth. So, I, I don't see why there's a problem with that.
Because people have to plan their schedule, because if you shove it at the end of it, people aren't going to, people aren't going to sit around.
Mr. Evans, that's not true, we will do our agenda like we normally, we can go from our business meeting into a work session. There's nothing wrong with that, okay? So you're making it into something that is not, so we can do that on June sixth at our next meeting.
So you want it at the end of the meeting?
Again, Mr. Evans, let's move forward, okay? Stop trying to find problems and let's move forward in a positive vein, and let's have a work session like you asked.
I'm trying to be respectful of people's times, and if we're asking experts to come in, that, don't just tell them it's at the end of the meeting, that could be thirty minutes or three hours. So that's what I'm saying, can we have a work session after the adoption of minutes, so it's the first thing on there, and then address the other matters? What is wrong with that, where everybody knows then that's concerned, probably about six, ten, we could talk about solar. Instead of, it might be eight, it might be nine, it might be ten, we've had meetings through to eleven.
Miss, that, no, no we don't, that was when you were president, that's why we stopped it, that's not true. We're out of here normally by seven thirty, eight o'clock, eight o'clock at the latest, but normally seven thirty.
So then adding one session.
So let's be honest, and let's discuss. We will discuss, we would do our business at the beginning, that's what a board meeting is all about, that's what, that's what we do here. We have our board meetings, take care of our business, then we can move into a work session, June sixth.
Judy, do you think we should just have a special, I, I called for a special meeting.
Okay, excuse me.
But you're going to move on.
That's not enough time to contact professionals and be able to work into the.
It's just out of order.
It is, it's just out of order, yeah, this is what we deal with, yes, totally out of order.
It's just out of order.
Yes, it's out of order.
I'm sorry, the crowd cannot.
Point of order.
You can't call on her, it's out of order.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, can we have a special meeting?
Mr. Evans.
Let's have a special meeting.
Mr. Johnson, please.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can have a meeting, you control how long the meeting lasts with your comments all the time. Otherwise the meeting would move pretty fast, I believe, I'll give it things, we could have plenty of time for a long meeting. So, I, I don't.
Well, I have a special meeting.
No, I haven't, I haven't made up this mind, my mind about any of this yet. So, if you really don't like it, you shouldn't aggravate me about it, because I'm going to do what's right, but I think when it's all said and done, okay? I don't know, I work for an agency, I know about solar, I know about all this stuff.
So do you have a conflict of interest?
No, I'm good, because it's not, we don't supply it, so it has no conflict of interest.
I'm saying, to, so, provide the proper time to deal with it, I think it should be a special meeting.
Mr. Evans, please, right now, we're going to order this, Mr. Johnson.
So what I like to see, I like to see a complete for, pros, and against. Things for, things against, not just, just not speeches about why we should have, or, I mean, that's actually good reasons when we do this. Not just, I don't like it, it's ugly, I mean, of course, yeah, those are things, we all know those things, some people think they're nice looking. I mean, they can maybe look nice. I want real reasons why or why not we should be doing it.
And that would be the work session, I would say bring in the solar companies, let them give their.
Results, they would be called for.
Correct, let them stay in there, be people against it, you get all the information, then you make a decision. But I don't think tacking on the end of the meeting is doing it any justice, just like today's public comments. I would call for a special meeting.
I did not hear that she was tacking on the meeting.
That's why I'm going to make it somewhere.
He makes that stuff.
Your one's tacking on the meeting, I didn't hear him say that at all.
I never said it.
Most proper work sessions are done, most, most entities will do it at four o'clock and then they'll have.
Well, we're not municipal, we can do it the way we want to do it.
Well, I'd call, if you, if you want me to address this, I would call for a special meeting that can ju, address just this at six P M. Set a date, we could do it on a Wednesday.
Are you making a motion of discussion?
I'll, I make a, I'll.
It's probably hard in the minutes.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to set a special meeting on. Our next meeting's the sixth, the seventh, for Wednesday, June seventh at six P M. To address the so.
Good night, maybe, I don't know.
Well, there's nothing, the township calendar has been being updated lately.
I am, I am not moving back because it was on computer, I don't know when it was completed, and once ago they completed, it's going to be not this week, I don't think, because I haven't been contacted about it in the meeting once.
Right, we just.
We'll wait until the next Wednesday, so I don't know, it's going to be the next Wednesday, I don't know when he's going to have it done, but.
Well, if we do that, do it that Wednesday, then you guys can do it the following Wednesday. Or, we can do it, if, how about this, I'll make a motion that we hold a special meeting for the purpose of the workshop on the solar and wind exclusionary zones, that will either be Wednesday, June seventh at six P M, or Wednesday, June fourteenth at six P M, dependent if the C A C committee is holding their meeting on one of those dates.
Is that a motion you've made, Ms. Evans?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
You want me to deal with this, that's what I think we need to deal with.
Second for discussion, why couldn't we just plan it on Tuesday, it's very our own meeting, say at six thirty, is that something you can work with? The last, the last forty-five minutes or the last?
Four hours, three hours, whatever, what's the matter?
That's what I'm thinking.
Do you guys, do we do our business like normal?
At six thirty we stop and whatever.
Make a light agenda on that day and just go into work session, that's, that's easy and simple.
So it's set at six thirty until, until it ends?
I don't see a problem, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, then I'll, I'll amend my motion to, that we have the work session at six thirty. On Tuesday, June sixth, so I work with you, Ms. Kathmeyer?
Well, it depends on the people that you're inviting at the town.
Well, that's what, yeah, so I, I'll, so we have a date, and then if we have to change it, then we'll change it.
She's on a board member, she's on a board.
Well, what I'm trying to do, I, I'm sorry, this is the person that you've tasked me with.
No, that's not how this goes, you have a board.
You appoint to audience members time and time again for information, Mr. Kennard, everybody, so please.
Again, Mr. Evans, no, I'm just going to ask you, this is the board, we are the board.
Do you need a second on the amendment?
He may have, he may have.
Now, he's just modifying it, you've got your second, okay, he's a little changed, now you just need a roll call.
Jeff, are you okay with this second?
Yes, roll call.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Then if there's changes needed because people can't attend, I'll let you know, hopefully you can cooperate with the agenda, I know you haven't yet.
Let's move on, we're going to move over into the hire, our new road crew. I will turn this meeting over to Ms. Nita Hanson, our administrator for the road crew positions, thank you.
Mr. Copley and I interviewed three candidates to hire for the road crew. These were candidates that Mr. Copley recommended for his crew. One gentleman that we met with, Darren Norman, previously worked for Shelley. Another candidate, John Foster, is a former employee of the township who left the road crew. And while typically it would be a concern to rehire someone who has left the township, we discussed this with Mr. Foster, I discussed it with Mr. Copley, I discussed it with other members of our road crew, and the reasons that Mr. Foster left the township before have been resolved either by the union and collective bargaining or by attrition of other road crew members. And so, Mr., is it a risk with Mr. Foster, given that he is a former employee who left our employ? Yes, but given the totality of all the, of all, of the entire situation, we believe that it's a good risk to take with Mr. Foster. And then finally, we interviewed Carl Keller, who had spent many years driving a truck. He's loved that, or desires to leave that profession. And we believe that these three members would be good candidates to add to our road crew. We would ask the trustees to consider hiring all three of them. I know Mr. Copley has a lot of work that needs to be done by the road crew, but at a minimum, approval to hire two of these candidates. And in order of preference would be Darren Norman, John Foster, and Carl Keller. And if there's additional information that you need, let me know, I know I provided you information about them. Mr. Copley's here and he can address it as well.
Thank you.
I do have questions, one.
Sure.
Ms. Hanson, I, I asked you for the applications for, that everybody, that, where everybody applied. I was only provided three, one was from John Foster's a year ago. Has there been other applicants, and if so, why hasn't their application been forwarded as requested?
Well, the only other applicant we have was someone who applied for part-time work because he was, he's received social security. And so, given that I am over the road crew, I worked with the supervisor of the road crew and interviewed the candidates that he believed were the candidates that should be accepted for employment. I, I mean, I didn't send you the one resume of, of the application of someone who applied for part-time, but it wasn't relevant to our decision.
Well, I, I do believe it's relevant, because the last time when we interviewed for the road crew, I asked for the applications and you said, why do you, why do you need them? And it's not, not the matter of, why do I need them? I, I'd like to review them to ensure that the proper people are being selected. And with that, the, the practice has been that we interview them and we should have executive session to discuss this, and now you're saying, you're, I was over the road crew before, but we still had to bring it to the board, and they were actually very insistent about that. Now, all of a sudden, we have a change. I am very concerned, and again, I apologize to Mr. Foster, this should have been in executive session, and this is very unprofessional, but this was due to Mr. Johnson, Mrs., Mr., Ms. McKee's lack of action, including executive session here. But Mr. Foster, there's no problem with rehiring somebody that left the township, but it's however, however, it's how they left. Mr. Foster put in, I don't believe it was two weeks' notice, to leave on October seventh, and then October fifth just left. So that's a concern, a concern also during his initial probationary period, there were questions, and I'm not going to go into specifics, but there were instances that hopefully Bubba's conveyed to you that, I, I, I believe, I, I understand we're down to three people in the road crew because multiple people left, and I warned the township about that.
Yes, you did, by calling them up, saying bad things about the township.
No, I, I warned them because they're not being treated properly and supported. And I know we need people, we're down to three people, we're mowing, I mean, Bubba's got to be behind, and I've been champion of trying to support them in that with equipment and road crew last year, you guys blocked hiring on that, we didn't understand. But we shouldn't just grab at anybody, and Mr. Foster, again, left before he said he was going to leave, just left. There were issues prior conduct in that, there's questions about, should we continue with full-time employment or ended at the probationary period? So, I don't think that'd be proper, and again, Mr. Foster, I'm sorry, I didn't want to do this, but I, I think we have to. So, I would be against them, but the other two, it'd be good to be able to talk to them, because this is something important. These are people serving the township and have great responsibilities, and I'm concerned that maybe proper due diligence wasn't.
So if I could please respond to some of your issues before. So if I could please respond to some of your issues, um, before they had, you had a full-time administrator, the trustees had to take their time.
It's right.
Interview people.
Right.
But as you have reminded me a number of times, I am over the road crew and so working with your trusted supervisor, uh, he identified the three candidates that he recommended, including Mr. Foster. Together, we interviewed the three gentlemen. Together, we discussed who would be the best candidates. Together, we discussed some of the issues that Mr. Foster, and I think when Mr. Foster left two days early, it was because his higher-paying job that he was able to get at the time was able to take him earlier. And so it was for his best interest to leave two days early.
Correct.
And so we, um, oh, I lost my train of thought.
Sorry, you may.
We, we talked about, we met with, and oh, this is what I wanna say. I don't know Mr. Foster, except for when I met him in the interview. But I know Mr. Copley. And I know Mr. Copley's commitment to this community. And I trust Mr. Copley. And when Mr. Copley, as the supervisor of the road crew, brings to me his recommendations for employment, I'm prepared to trust Mr. Copley.
That's good.
Probably quit. We're, we're the ones that have to approve it. And like I said, during Mr. Foster's entire time, I was over the road crew and dealt with that. And again, this is shameful that this isn't being discussed in an executive session. I asked you, Ms. Hanson, and you missed the key and both didn't care.
Again, we do care.
We must be better.
I know you continue to say we don't care. We care about our road crew. We care about the township and we care about the residents. Mark, you know, we know that you want to pretend to be this savior, that you're not. Okay, we're working together here in this township and getting things done professionally. May not be the way you want them, but we're doing things professionally, um, to ensure that we are getting people here to work, that we, um, know that are doing a good job. Now, I know you called a rest, uh, one of the, uh, applicants on the first round. It's bad, not the township, really bad. Talked about wages, said some really bad stuff about this township and about the board. They decided not to take the position. So this is why we are now hiring an additional person tonight.
No, the reason why is because you didn't tell them about what was in the union contract, the, the wages. And we were told the wages and that weren't a part of it and that is exactly opposite than what he said. So we're gonna move on.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Hanson?
No, that's all. I just asked the board to, um, consider hiring all three of these, um, applicants or at a minimum, hiring two.
I'll move a motion to hire Darren Norman and John Foster. Um, contingent on passing, what are those tests?
Right, yeah, so the, the, um, drug test, the background check, and the driving marker.
Can we break these separately?
According to, um, the union contract.
Yes.
I will second. Um, I wanna go on to discussion. I'm sorry.
Okay, start date.
Oh, start date.
Oh, yeah, as you made a start date within, well, um, let's see.
Uh.
So, Mr. Norman would be, um, available on one week's notice if we can get all of his background work done. Um, Mr. Foster, he could, Mr. Foster could start immediately once we get all of his background.
So, so I think.
Maybe two weeks.
But I'm gonna put a two-week date on it.
Or sooner.
Whatever that is, or sooner or, or later even, just on passivity that, but the target date is two weeks from today. We'll soon remember what that is.
Thank you.
Two days, two weeks from Monday, maybe? Should we set on Monday or?
Yeah.
Two weeks from this Monday.
Your Monday, the twenty-ninth is a holiday, so starting May thirtieth?
Yeah, May thirty.
Now, if we can have, we're in discussion. We, we said it, a start date last time and that was violated.
What was it?
No, it was not.
The last time it was not an approximate.
It was a proposed start date.
Right, it was, it was a start date.
Proposed start date.
But can, can we break this up into individuals? I, I'll move to amend the agenda to deal with these people one by one. So that we can have a, a vote for each, each person, which I think should be done. So I, I'll make a motion to amend it to, uh, for the hiring of, uh, Mr. Norman only and then we can deal with the others afterwards.
Yeah, second.
Discussion. You guys wanna break it up?
You want to break it up? Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
This is just on the.
This is just on the. Because you have a motion that's hiring two people together, you probably better opt to withdraw that and then make them separate. Because once you go through and then you go to vote on the first amendment, the first motion.
You're gonna have it together. Okay, gotcha. Makes sense. Thanks, Mark. Give us a little try.
That's how I recommend it.
So we withdraw the, the, uh.
You're asking me to withdraw my motion? Oh, Robert's rules, once you have discussion, you can't withdraw a motion.
You can rescind the motion. I mean, if you guys wanna do it that way and then when you go to vote for them together, you're gonna deny hiring them? I mean, I'm gonna do it, break them.
No, I'm amending it and that's amended. It's no longer there.
When you amend it, you have to vote on the amendment and then if I can vote on the original motion as amended.
Right, and it'll be amended for that single person.
I'm gonna start letting Mr. Evans do the minutes because he makes it very difficult.
I'll do them. It'll be accurate.
And you are allowed to rescind the motion per parter.
That's true.
Not once it's discussed.
You can rescind the motion, Mark.
So we rescind.
Does that make his, oh, I rescind mine. Okay, I rescind my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'd be a lot cleaner in the minutes.
Now, do the same motion except for I will put.
Do them individually.
I will put Darren Norman. Same motion I had before. So I'll move to hire Darren Norman for testing. Drug testing.
Background check.
Approximate start date or target start date.
At twenty-four dollars an hour. At the start date of.
I just, so what do you wanna know? My motion is to hire Darren Norman. As per union contract, contingent on testing, drug testing, uh, license. And what's the other one? There's three.
Background check.
Background check. Target, target start date would be May twenty-ninth.
About May thirty.
May thirty.
I, I'll second that. So we go into a discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, discussion?
No, again, I think, uh, that it's improper that we didn't have this in executive session and that we, we didn't have a chance to even really speak to him.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to hire Mr. Keller.
There's no second, so it dies from lack of second.
Make a motion to hire John Foster.
I'll second.
According to, same, whatever you wanna call it, same as we had.
Right.
Darren Norman.
Which would be for the, uh, road crew in twenty-four hours. The background check.
Yep, contingent on background check.
Right, license check.
And drug test.
I'll second it.
What?
She said he could start.
Contingent on it, contingent on that. So with the approximate target date to start, thirty.
I'll second. Discussion, Mr. Evans?
I've already said one. Again, it's a shame that, that prior discussion should have been in the executive session. It's unprofessional to be forced to state those in public. And that's on you, Ms. McKee and Mr. Johnson.
That's, we have a different setup here.
All you had to do is go into executive session.
And our new administrator here, Ms. Nita Hanson, is over the road crew, which we voted as a board to put her over the road crew. And she works directly with our superintendent, which is, um, Bubba, um, Don Copley, Mr. Copley. And Mr. Copley's known with the township for many years. We trust him. He's done a great job, um, here in the township. And this person would be working directly for him. Um, and he's worked with him before. So, um.
And we've interviewed him before anyways.
Yeah.
We've already interviewed.
So, Mr., um.
And there's been actions since then. That should have been discussed in executive session.
Again, Mr. Evans, now that we have an administrator, things are changing.
Then it's no.
Yes.
It doesn't matter who we have. Those conversations should be in the, in the executive session with the administrator to all, not just to Ms. McKee or Mr. Johnson outside the meetings.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn?
Mr. Evans?
No.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. McKee?
Yes.
For the record, that is the, the target of start date, so they can't start earlier as long as they have the background check.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yes. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the fiscal officer report. I move resolution twenty-three oh-five-one-six-zero-one to approve the purchase order as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Trying to find my purchase orders. There were only two. I don't think I heard any questions on those. Oh, wait, here. Yeah, uh, the Westler Media. Oh, that's for the Lex.
Yes.
And then the State Security, was that part of, is that new? Or is that part of the other proposed items that were passed before?
Those are key cards to get in the gate. When they scan a card, they just have those little fob and cap where they can sell the cards instead. They order it out because it gets broken.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move to ratify the payments for the bills as shown on the payment listing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Johnson, discussion?
None.
Mr. Evans?
I do have a question about this. Nine thousand six hundred twelve dollars just Howard Electric, uh, authorized. I mean, I know it needs to be done, but the authorization is limited to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Um, so I think we need to properly address these types of expenditures approved because it's already done. What we're doing is asking for the approval after it's done. So we should either set something up where it's approved up to a certain amount for light poles or these should be addressed to the board before the, the work's actually done.
This is like the one that was about two years ago that I had on that part.
Yes.
Right, but I don't think it was approved back then.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
And as, I, as I understand it, although it happened a long time ago, it's subject to insurance reimbursement.
Yes, that's correct.
But it's still our expenditure and two of those polls happened just last year. I mean.
Roll call, Ms. Varyn?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Announcements and trustee comments are limited to three minutes, please, Mr. Evans.
Uh, yeah, question. Uh, we currently have video that's being illegally overwritten. Uh, we don't have a records policy. I've been asking about this forever. I've actually had to done, do a public records request for the retention and the minutes for prior records commission meetings and they've been denied. I've asked for, as a trustee for it and administrator's not providing these. Now, this is illegal per Ohio revised code. At least four months of the Township Garage's security footage has been illegally overwritten. I brought this intent up to Mr. Johnson and told him well before that in, in February twelfth about it would start overriding. Did nothing. Brought it up to the administrator, has done nothing. What I was doing when I was over the garage is I would buy another hard drive, swap it out to preserve it, is what I was told to do. That ability to purchase the hard drive was removed from Mr. Gi- by Mr. Johnson, Ms. McKee. So I have no control over that now, but I'd like to know why you're allowing records be illegally overwritten. Uh, and then I did notice during, I mean, you can do whatever you want, Miss McKee, during public comments, you were just flipping through bills. That's very disrespectful, I think, to the, to the public. Um, regarding the park, we had a question about the park committee. The proposal only allows for one public session to be in, so we're, it doesn't look like we're gonna have a park committee like we talked about before or really any public, real public input. I think we should have a park committee, have interested people. We had Sarah Ferguson before that was interested. We have kids that were interested. That's gonna be their future park. Let's, let's get more involved than just one session, kinda get ideas and just go, go forward from there. Uh, and then I would like to make the correction, the, the light Ohio blue is not to honor just policemen. It's to honor those that fall in duty. And it's, six years ago, we, we lost the chief of police at Kirkersville and that's one of the things. So I, I would, uh, ask everybody to go out there tomorrow between seven and seven-twenty to honor him and the other fallen officers. Um, we do have the memorial dedication coming up on Memorial Day. Uh, we still have not secured an honor guard, uh, again, due to the delay in setting the date. Um, I, I don't know if we're gonna be able to have one. Uh, still waiting for the sheriff, but if anybody has any leads on that, uh, please let me know. I wish we could have set the date earlier. Um, and then also, what else do we have? Uh, again, solar, somebody mentioned about putting on warehouses. Prologis does that on, on their buildings. Now, the thing is, you have to design the roofs for that load. It's very difficult and expensive to retrofit it. But I think maybe we, we should encourage that. We control abatements. We control all this economic development. Why, why don't we say, hey, let's work with these developers, put the solar on your, on your roof if, if it's vital and give them an incentive there. Uh, but what else is there?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Uh.
Ms. McKee, ma'am?
Please, absolutely.
So I think there's just a misconception about the memorial ceremony. It is Mr. Bragg's memorial ceremony. We are, we are hosting it at the park, but it is not a township ceremony. Mr. Bragg is the one who has established everything having to do with that. And so, but the township doesn't have any responsibility for getting an, an honor guard or anything else because it's Mr. Bragg.
My, my point, Mr. Bragg asked back in March for the date to be set and it was delayed, delayed, delayed until a point where we couldn't.
Mr. Evans, you're at your three minutes. Thank you very much. I'm gonna move over to Mr. Johnson here to see if he has any public comments.
None.
None at all tonight? Okay. Well, I just wanna address the park. I am the trustee over the park and I know there's some folks that wanna rush it and push it through. It's not, um, we're not setting up a board yet or a community, but we will have the public involved. It takes time. I know some people want it to happen right now and as soon as possible, but it does take time. We will do like we did with the comp plan. We'll set up a committee. We'll get the public involved, get some ideals. It's gonna be a fun project, so I'm looking forward to doing that in the future. Thank you.
So I want the.
I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, Ms. Varyn?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Just like to let people know, the proposal for that park consulting does not include, it's one public input session.